RA Brown Middle School Choir. Yes. RA Brown's first semester middle school chorus has 86 participating students. There are 37 students enrolled in a half year chorus and 49 students enrolled in full year chorus. They meet every day to learn basic vocal fundamentals, musical skills, sight reading skills, music vocabulary, and various oral literature selections spanning across all genres and as many cultures from around the world as possible. The chorus performed alongside century choirs at their fall and winter concerts and the holiday caroling event at the Washington Square Mall. The chorus has an award-winning past of receiving first place five times in the past 10 years at the Music in the Parks Choir Competition up in Tacoma. This year, several students auditioned to represent our department at the Oregon Music Education Association All-State Conference held in Eugene. Would Natalie Conquer please give us away?
Hello, Conquer.
There's Natalie. And Eli Brice. They were selected to participate in the Treble and Tener Base choirs. This is Eli's second year to be selected as an all-state choir member. Speaking of superstars, their director is Mary Kay Babcock. This is Mary Kay's 20th year to teach music for Hillsborough Schools, and she is our music secondary, is our secondary music TOSA teacher on special assignment. Mrs. Babcock is planning several performance opportunities for an anticipated 96 students in the second semester. 96, that's awesome. Students will be given the option to participate in OMEA District 50 Solo and Ensemble Festival held in Mountainside High School February 29th, and Male Ensemble Northwest Workshop on April 18th. The choir, the chorus is slated to compete at the American Core Association Festival on April 30th at Pacific University. They will also perform at the Hillsborough Barbers Market for Proud to Be HSD on May 9th. They will compete at Music in the Parks on May 30th. To conclude the year, they will have their final concert titled Spring Sing on June 4th at the Century High Auditorium. Ladies and gentlemen, your RA Brown Middle School Choir.
Very important also to learn about multicultural things, and that was from our fall concert. So we learned about the indigenous Indians of the Pacific Northwest and how these songs were passed along. We learned them not with music and pen, ink, and paper. We learned them by eyes and tune, by rope. And so, but they did a beautiful job of combining two songs. So Blue Waters in the North and My Pedals Keen and Bright. Our next song is a song that every kid drinks of, and we just missed it by that much a couple of weeks ago, but it's snowing. And so this is called Seven Feet of Snow. Oh, I'm sorry. Strike a pose.
What's that I see outside the window? Big snowy flakes frosty white. Don't think we'll have some tomorrow. It's supposed to snow all night. We're waiting for one, two, three, four, five, six, seven feet of snow. We're hoping for one, two, three, four, five, six, seven feet of snow. We're waiting for one, two, three, four, five, six, seven feet of snow. Cause when it snows, we always know we need to throw out a little snow a lot of dope. When it looks, it's right, it's showing us even though it's everywhere. We're looking to go outside and throw a bunch of snow. Seven feet of snow, yeah!
Well, quick up our mic. So, middle school is already tough enough when you're in middle school. And so there was this wonderful movie that came out, was it just last year?
Yeah.
Or the year before, anyway, The Greatest Showman. And so there's a show, or a song from that that really teaches students about just accepting themselves for themselves and being thankful of their own skin. And it's not okay to make fun of others, and so we don't bully them for any reason. And so I want to feature our all-state students Natalie Conquer and Eli Brice, but in reverse order. And this is The Greatest Showman. Thank you, sir. Just here. Okay.
But won't let them break me down to dust. I know that there's a place for us. For we are glorious. When the sharpest words wanna cut me down. Gonna send a flood gonna drown them out. I am brave, I am bruised. I am who I'm meant to be, this is me. Look out, cause here I come. They're marching on to the beat I drum. I'm scared to be seen. I make no apologies, this is me. Another round of bullets hits my skin. Oh, far away, close today, I won't let the shame sink in. We are glorious, and that's what we become. Won't let them break me down to dust. I know that there's a place for us. We are glorious. Sharpest words wanna cut me down. Gonna send a flood gonna drown them out. I am brave, I am bruised. I am who I'm meant to be, this is me. Look out, cause here I come. They're marching on to the beat I drum. I'm scared to be seen. I make no apologies, this is me. When the sharpest words wanna cut me down. I'm gonna send a flood gonna drown them out. This is brave, this is bruised, this is who I'm meant to be, this is me. Look out, cause here I come. They're marching on to the beat I drum. I'm scared to be seen. I make no apologies, this is me. Send a flood to drown them out. This is me.
All right, everyone, we will start with our board meeting. Recomine our board meeting. And our first order is to do our black salute, so people will all join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So we were so excited to hear the Brown Middle School. We're gonna move to our next item on the agenda, which is our board recognition.
All right, so this is board appreciation month. You'll see around the room that a number of schools have made posters and also provided you with some gifts. And that in no way makes up for the time we took. We donated countless hours on behalf of our students, whether it be visiting schools, whether it be out in our own community, or whether it be out in Salem doing tattletale work. So for all that work, we read a proclamation once a year. So here it is. And who else would believe would be locked in? And all those people on the floor, I thought for a minute, are we having a sit-in? Just for a second. So I really believe that was the case. So this could be the biggest gift of all, no sit-in this evening. It's just, it was quiet. All right, so proclamation. Whereas school boards create a vision for what students should know and be able to do, and whereas school boards establish clear standards for student performance, and whereas school boards ensure that student assessments are tied to established standards, and whereas school boards are accountable to the community for operating schools that support student achievement, and whereas school boards align the school district resources to ensure that students meet standards, and whereas school boards create a climate that supports the philosophy that all children can learn at high levels, and whereas school boards build collaborative relationships based on trust, teamwork, and shared accountability, and whereas school boards are committed to continue its education and training on issues related to student achievement. We hereby declare our appreciation to the members of the Hillsborough School District's Board of Directors and proclaim the month of January 2020 to be School Board Recognition Month. Thank you very much for your service.
Thank you, Mike. All right, our next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda.
I move that we approve the agenda as written. Second.
So has been moved by Martin and seconded by Adira, that we approve the agenda as printed, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries. Our next item is volume time. Have we received any votes? Okay. Now we move on to our consent agenda.
I move that we approve the consent agenda as printed. Second.
Sorry, didn't catch the school first.
Second.
That was Lisa.
Oh, Lisa, sorry.
Thank you. So has been moved by Lisa and seconded by Jackie that we approve our consent agenda as printed, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? So it carries. Our next item is our action items. So the first item that we have is to award a contract for roofing projects with Casey Wolcic.
Of the course of 2017 bond program, we had multiple schools where we're either doing full roof replacements or partial roof replacements. Before you, we have a bid to our pre-qualified roofing contractors for the scope at Eastwood, Inlay, and Liberty High School for roofing contracts. So if there's any questions regarding these bids or the contractors, we'd be happy to answer them.
Board, you're in motion.
I move that the Board of Directors award the contracts for summer 2020 roofing projects as follows. Eastwood Elementary School to Uncoar Roofing in the amount of $1,040,000. Or is that neat, right? Inlay Elementary School to Uncoar Roofing in the amount of $175,394. Liberty High School to Uncoar Roofing included in the Inlay Elementary School bid.
Second.
So has been moved by Martin and seconded by Lisa. All those in favor for the motion? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries. Our next item is to award contracts for Indian Hills Elementary School Interior Improvement with Casey, again.
This summer, we'll be doing our interior improvements at Indian Hills Elementary School, including a modular classroom. On December 4th, the district posted an open invitation for general contractors following our regular procedures. And the end result is to award in-line construction contracted in the amount of $947,000.
Motion is on, please.
I move that the Board of Directors award the contract for Indian Hills Elementary School Interior Improvements to In-Line Construction in the amount of $947,158.
Second.
So has been moved by Lisa and seconded by Jackie. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries. Our next item is to accept gifts and donations with the show.
Interview directors, December 31st, we had a donation of $5,000 from OBA Choice Trust in the Hillsborough District Use for Employee Wellness Program. It used to be that OBA Choice Trust did more of a grant-based program, and now it's a big shift to the type of donation. These are to encourage buildings to develop kind of wellness leaders in their building with low-cost, no-cost activities for staff to participate in.
I move that the Board of Directors accept a donation of $5,000 from OBA Trust Choice. Second.
So has been moved by Jackie and seconded by Sheen. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries. Our next item is award bid for the purchase of school buses with Michelle Ken.
Interview directors, every year, this summer of the year, we talk about how to buses, how to purchase scale. We're doing a replacement cycle to stay on target for replacing all those old scooters. As thanks to the NPA's say, this situation is a little bit different in a couple of ways. One, we were able to maintain pricing from last year's RFP, so we didn't necessarily have to go back out and update the pricing. We are asking for a total authorization of $1.9 million, which is more than we would typically ask, but we have received confirmation that we are on target to receive reimbursement for five propane buses, and so we're gonna purchase more and receive some reimbursement dollars in a bold way. And it's kind of a settlement, actually, as term as a rebate. And so the equipment lease that we're putting forward is very similar in value to what we will ask for in, we have asked for prior years, and we will bring forward a resolution to approve financing in May for the balance of $1.2 million, which is in line with what we typically ask for. So just a few different things about this request, but we do expect to keep this on target for our bus purchases.
I move that the Board of Directors award the bid for school bus purchases to Western Bus Sales and Schlecke Northwest and approve purchase of four propane and 11 clean diesel school buses at a cost, total cost not to exceed $1,916.
Second.
So has been moved by Martin and seconded by Adira. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion passes. Okay, our next item on the agenda is reports and discussion. And then first is Northwest. RA SD update with Lisa Holden.
Hi, I'm Lisa Bullets. I know that they're the board member that's new to your board, so I thought maybe I should talk about what the SD is, okay. We are a board of directors that serves four counties, Washington, Chillicothe, Platteville, and Columbia. And I represent the Hillsborough School District boundary area on that board. We support 20 districts in those four counties. Some direct services such as early intervention and early childhood special acts, and then also specialized school programs like Levi Anderson for students who have those kind of needs. And then the other part we do is we support districts with professional development and other needs they might have. So what I brought tonight was just three different initiatives that we've been working on this fall, just to give you an update where we are. The first is the Student Success Act Saleup. And the ESD has a unique piece of that in that we are directed to support districts as they work towards implementing SSA and applying for the funds. So John Timms is our point person. And I won't read all the notes, sorry. I won't read this all to you, but ways that Hillsborough specifically has opted in is to receive support working on your community engagement process. Other districts, we've actually done the very ground level community engagement, whereas you guys have already had it started, so we just supported you. And then right now, you're also working with our SIA consulting team to get the applications in. So another initiative we're working on is the Cascade Alliance for Equity. We call that CAFA. And back on October 31st, there was our first conference out at the Airport Sheraton. There was a speaker, we had a lot of people there. The next one's coming up in April, or it's in March at Embassy Suites. And so we hope to have more people in Canada. And another initiative, and this is one we've been working on for a long time in partnership with the 20 districts, is our Ninth Grade on Track. But our ESD just received national recognition from the Carnegie Foundation for the Work. It's down on the, um... So we have some people who actually were recognized for their work helping our districts in the ESD areas on their ninth grade, Ninth Grade on Track work. And Hillsborough has been one of our partners in this. And we've seen some, I was reviewing the graduation rates. It's really great to see increases in Hillsborough, especially Hillsborough High School. Nice increases. Do you have any questions?
I have a comment.
Okay.
So Lisa was a board member for the Hillsborough School District.
2007-ish, yeah, a couple of years.
Wow. And Hannah Paulmark has had a career leadership in Hillsborough. It had to do with using data to make the safety affiliate head for time when it came to that. And as well as being a strong voice for students with disabilities. And so we continue to appreciate your community service, serving the ESD as well. You also mentioned the Ninth Grade on Track work, and we do have Principal Vickery here from Hawaii, who, um, who, um, tractors line. And, um, one of the, one of the, one of the things that Dave should be really proud of is just that Ninth Grade on Track work is really impressive, especially at Hillsborough High School, as well as the increase in grad rates, as Lisa mentioned. So we continue to appreciate our partnership with the ESD, especially on the work that is similar to the Ninth Grade on Track. I know we're getting ready for more iterations of that work as well, so appreciate that.
Great. Thank you.
Lisa, before you, I did have a question for you. What about the CAFA conference that you had?
Yes.
Is there any information that you would share, like, that the ESD can do around that? What comes out of that?
The idea is it's a collaboration. I don't know if you've heard of Cascade Technology Alliance, which is multiple ESDs that work together to be more efficient at technology. Sort of the same thing, a couple of ESDs, I don't remember which three, or three, they got together to support each other on the work towards equity. So all of our districts are working towards equity efforts. And so the reason behind CAFA is to consolidate efforts.
Thank you, Lisa. Okay, our next item on the agenda is the financial report with Michelle Ken.
Interview directors, just a couple things I'd like to highlight that are going on. Just ongoing work with our bookkeepers by our client manager, who's really our kind of our internal control agency working with us. Our student body accounting professionals in the high schools, they manage quite a lot of money, and we do audit them every year, and so she's leading that work with the monthly kind of small, sort of group setting and sharing of best practices there. And we are having kind of a voluntary audit of our loan firm. We have a third firm coming in outside of Brookmeers wanting to be our regular district independent auditors. So that work is gonna provide some internal information to us to make sure that we're monitoring spending in accordance with the statute title and our loan promise. I'm happy to answer any questions you have. We did attach to the financial report a kind of annual risk management report. To that, this is a little bit different. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have specific to that. It includes our premium information and our experience rating. It includes our premium information and our experience rating, which is kind of where we score in terms of workman's planks and that. So if you guys want to get into this program available, you can have a good social scan.
Our votes over. We will move on to the next item on the agenda, which is our first reading of the high school course approval charter screen.
Got a squad. You got a bunch of teammates. You guys not ready to be good yet?
I know, we were just saying that we're ready.
That's good. First of all, everybody gets set up. I would like to thank the board for approving the aerospace biomechanics in unified E classes part of the consent agenda. Anything to say during the time of that feedback? Thank you very much. Today, we have two more courses for 30-day review. And I'll introduce Becky K. Smith, who's our coordinator of teaching and learning for secondary. And Becky provides a lot of leadership for our program development and course catalog. And she's here to introduce our guests. After each of our guests presents, I'll speak on behalf of the CCAC. Rebecca Nelson couldn't be here tonight, so I'll just leave notes on the conversation that happened in our community curriculum advisory committee. And then we'll take questions from the board after each presentation. So Becky.
Hello. The first course that we're going to have presented is Topics and Issues in Literature. We're going to have Bob Bijak from Glencoe High School propose this class. Just so you know, I'm sure all of you are familiar, but while we have teachers from specific high schools who are presenting these classes, do go in our course catalog. And so they are available for any school to potentially offer down the road. As, and that's happened with many classes that we've come here and proposed and approved by the board that then they spread to our other high schools as well. So Dr. Bijak is a teacher at Glencoe High School for English Language Arts. And this is a .5 elective class that would be available to 10th through 12th graders, kind of looking for a rigorous, kind of pre-college experience. All I can explain the rest of the state.
All right. Good evening. I'm Bob Bijak, and I teach English at Glencoe High School. The course that I want to propose tonight is called Topics and Issues in Literature. And let's see, what will this course do for our students at Glencoe? I want to create this course to invite students to survey a broad range of poets, novelists, playwrights, and essayists. I want students to familiarize themselves with the significant characteristics of the influential literary and historical periods, as well as enrich their perspective of such literary luminaries and to build an analytic and critical vocabulary for the activity of writing about and discussing literature. And finally, I want them to unpack great works of literature, bearing in mind such literary elements as central idea, theme, character, conflict, point of view, setting, syntax, distinction, mood, and tone. So I want to enhance their experience in literature. Rather than doing three or four novels at a time, as you would do in a normal English Language Arts class, you would instead focus on one central text. So why should we adopt it? I want to teach students better writing skills. I want them to be able to manipulate language. I want them to be college-ready by having better grasp of the written language and to refine their writing as a whole. I want to prepare all learners for the rigors of upper-division-level English reading and writing coursework. As I said, we're going to study fewer texts, but do a deeper dive on certain elements of that text. And then to reach beyond the Common Course Day standards to prepare themselves for the post-secondary coursework in its various manifestations, so not just college, but helping them in their career and other dual-credit options potentially. These were just some of the different courses that I came up with to entice students to want to take this course. We could focus on mythology. We could focus on Oscar Wilde. Some fun ones that I came up with were like Literary Damination and looking at post-apocalyptic literature and young adult fiction. De-Ordering the Canon, even Exploding the Canon, looking at PTSD in literature. Even looking at the female canon, so looking at some author, or different authors than, you know, dead white guys all the time. And maybe looking at character-based text, looking at like hauntings and supernatural elements of literature, looking at good old Shakespeare, do some Macbeth and King layer comparison, contrast. Looking even further into Ralph Ellison's Invisible Man, looking at the main protagonist as the anti-hero. And then, of course, this is just a sample of the reading and writing standards embedded within the course, providing well-rounded learning for all students, allowing them to dig deeper into a text and then offering legitimate college-level work in terms of discussions, critical thinking, researching, and then modeling the actual writing in the class. So for this course, there are no projected costs. All of the curriculum that we would be using would be already adopted by the Hillsborough School District. Topics for the course are based on student interest and text availability, of course. The, I'll talk about how I developed the next three in the next part. But advertising the course will happen during academic forecasting, which will be coming up. And then evaluation will be given to students at the end of the academic semester. So what I did was I actually surveyed all of my classes this year. I gave them six options that I pulled from the classes that I created. And I asked them if they were to take this class, what topics would interest you most? And after I surveyed, the top three were Unearthed, Undead, and Uninvited inside the vampiric world of Bram Stoker's Dracula, Literary Criminology, Truman Capone's In Cold Blood and the Birth of the True Crime Novel, and Invisibility of the Literary Antihero, an examination of Ralph Ellison's Invisible Man. So what I kind of envisioned happening is that these three courses, if approved, would go on the forecasting sheet. And then if the kids wanted to enroll in the class, they would circle which one interested them most. And then the top two would serve as Semester One and Semester Two for them in class. And that's it.
Can I take your questions?
Oh, my gosh, would you please? Yes, yes.
Sorry, I didn't mean to.
Jackie, your comment is representative of a couple of the folks at the CCAC who are really excited. Like, where was Dr. Bijak when I was in college?
Exactly.
So I just want to share really quickly three notes. One, this is an example of really exciting teaching that aligns to Common Course Day standards. One question that the CCAC had is how do you decide on the topics with such a wide range? And then I think Bob did a good job of answering how he pulls his own students to generate excitement around a course, and then students would be able to forecast for that course, knowing what the topics are. And then a question about access, so with language and literacy as a barrier for some students in the higher-level language arts courses, they asked how do you help support all students to access this? And some of the answers that we had in our notes were offering books in Spanish, using reality, like real objects to make connections for students. And then videos or like visual adaptations of text to help students overcome a wide range of reading levels and language proficiency in a high school context. So just wanted to share that the CCAC eventually voted 13 to 0 to 0 to move this course forward to the board for consideration. So happy to answer any questions at this time about the course.
Our buttons are working.
I know, the buttons are working. I'm just gonna look at you and then call you on the one. So let's do Mark, Lisa, and then students.
Yes, thank you for the reading list and yes, I do want to take the class. We have the exact ones they picked on the other one, but still. And I just also want to take the opportunity to thank Dr. Bijak for serving as part of Andrew's mentor network of adult support in the schools. And I appreciate you doing that work all the time. I must be random, but I'm sure he's disappointed you can't take the class.
And thank our other half of us, Lisa Pearson out there. Yes, very good, yes.
So I was just gonna go first. Listen, people can't raise their hand. I was just, can I please also take some just names? I love this so much, and I really loved, and I really kind of started writing it down, and then you said, it's not just a bunch of little white dead guys. And I love the list, like you have a Trudy Alfred is on there, Morrison on there. And I'm really excited. I have to say that I'm a little bit bummed out at the choices that the students themselves selected. So I would hope that maybe you might force a little bit more, like maybe Semester One student choose? Semester Two? Dr. Bob chooses? But I was so excited to see that. And I love the creativity of the way you're meaning the titles engaging. I'm so excited, and so saddened I'm not high school anymore. So excellent job.
We'll start by any time between 12:00.
I don't say that in this morning.
I'm in pleasure, yes.
Did I interrupt? I think I thought Danny and Andrew.
I'm gonna let Andrew go first, though.
Mark, you were sort of like what I was gonna say. I've actually been probably like the luckiest person on this board because I had AP music with Dr. Bijak a couple of years back. And that was one of the most, the way he teaches it is one of the most fun classes, rather one of the most magical classes I've taken, not just in high school, but in my time with the Hillsborough School Districts. And as I was looking at this, I was nearly on the edge of my seat because, you know, I really wish that I would have had the opportunity to take this as a high schooler. But I also know that, with that in mind, that I would like the future of Glencoe and the future of the, if this really works out, maybe the other high schools to be able to access this. Because, I mean, I've been through, you know, it's like real like deep, in-depth textual analysis. Like, we came up with a whole bunch of theories that like nobody would have ever thought of before. He, you know, sort of holds your hand at the beginning, helps you, you know, dip your feet to the water of learning analysis, and then he lets you go, and you're still floating in the water, and you just have had it. And it is so much fun. AP love is amazing, Dr. B is amazing. And I would very, very, very highly, very highly recommend that we really in support of this course.
Okay. Danny. I don't think I need the mic, I'm good. I have to like sit on my foot, I'm loud. I wanted to say that I really love like the whole creativity aspect of it. I love the different types of topics, making it culturally accessible to students, making it relevant to their lives now, as well as still like looking back on classic literature and everything. I just, as the only student around with a year left of high school, I'm sitting here like, can I transfer to Century? Like, the Century, you go to Glencoe. Can I transfer to Glencoe? How is this gonna work out?
I'm gonna have Jackie, then Maria.
Oh, no, I don't think it's gonna work.
So Maria, and then you.
I think I do need the mic. It didn't work. Okay, so I know you mentioned that it was .5 credits, right?
Yep.
But could it maybe make up for like missing pass credit, maybe like English credit or?
I don't know. I don't know how that would work. I don't know what we would have to do.
Yeah, that would be, we'd have to go back and like re-examine what this is because when we are looking at credits, there are core credits versus elective credits, our core credits have to align with the standards that are required for that grade level that that course is associated with. So while this class is designed to align with the Common Course standards for English Language Arts, I don't know that it would be fully aligned with like a particular grade level and encompass everything that was in that. I will say we have had courses that we've offered for a couple of years and realized that they can be substitutions for certain courses. So those are things that often develop as the course develops as well, is what I would say. But in regards to how we have it proposed now, I just proposed it.
Sheen.
Yeah, so considering that probably more than half the people on this side of the table will likely be in the class, what do you see as a manageable class size? And if you have more interests than seats available in class, how will you prioritize which student?
I've been in the Hillsborough School District now for 11 years. A manageable class size for me is like 44.
My new favorite sad.
I straighten that.
So we're all saints.
Yeah, I don't want anybody to be turned away. I just, the only thing that I would be worried about were the number of books I have. Yeah.
All right, well, thank you so much for the presentation. And I also love this topic and reading, I hope we have. And I think I didn't actually encounter an author from a diverse background in college, which is pretty sad. And I hope that students can get an opportunity to do that, so.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Okay, our second presentation, it's very clear now, is for IBDP using SL. And I will let our experts explain, like everything of those letters represent. But this class would be a, an elective class, but within the International Baccalaureate Program, which both Ashley and Ben will get into in a moment here. This is a unique situation, while where our courses are, unless we're adding to our catalog that we offered at any of our high schools. Hillsborough High School is our only IB school. So this is a class that would end up being offered only at Hillsborough High School. However, Ben shared that this is very similar to our AP Music Theory class, kind of equivalent idea that we do already offer at our other three high schools. So playing this class is Ashley Clements, who is our IB coordinator, instructional coach at Hillsborough High School, and Ben Royce, who is our current director and mariachi teacher at Hillsborough High School.
Good evening, directors. I'm Ashley Clements. So I'm gonna assume some familiarity with AP and then kind of speak to the other students. So just really briefly, the IB, the international part of that kind of references the fact that this is a curriculum model that is shared across the globe. And we are one of a growing number of schools that can go to 25 now, with Dick Oregon in that room. The International Baccalaureate Program, we're one of the first. We've had it at Hill High for, in our 16th year of the diploma program. And part of the mission of the diploma program is to offer students one of the most rigorous college preparatory educations available internationally and one of the most respected. And also to really focus on making sure that students are getting a full picture in their education in terms of getting access to all sorts of interdisciplinary learning. And so we're wanting to expand the interdisciplinary option in our arts section of the IB with music. So these are the courses that we currently offer in the program at Hill High. And students are able to engage with IB at Hill High in three different ways. They're able to take the full diploma program, which is six courses, one from each of those groups, plus the core, which is the Theory of Knowledge course, CAFS, which is essentially a service learning component, and the extended essay, which is what most of us who have been through college would equate to a significant term paper, it's 4,000 words of independent research. Students can also do what we've named the Honors Current College Pathways. So it's kind of half of the GP program. And they'll take any three courses, any levels, plus complete TOK over two years and the CAFS component. And then students can take all-to-alocurt experience as well. They can choose any class, any number of classes from this selection. And so you can see where we want to add Music SL to our Group Six options.
Well, then, can you talk about why?
A little bored. So as I said, I am Ben Royce, I'm the choir and mariachi director at Hill High and the choir director of South Woods. And currently at Hill High, we have roughly 250 students involved in our music performance classes. And actually, I didn't remember guitar when I involved this, so it's probably closer to 300 students. The thing is that we focus here on group performance. And IB Music will add a focus, a magnetized focus on music theory, ear training, and musical ethnography in our performance classes right now. We teach these things, but we're limited by time constraints and pressure for performance down the road. Currently, 58 of our students are taking, of our music students are taking IB courses. And from a quick survey made with the 11th grade IB honors students, we saw 38% of them showed interest in taking IB Music. Doing this will give a pathway to the IB diploma for students who haven't met the arts prerequisite, either through visual or theater. So.
Yeah, we hit.
Yeah, there's, okay, so I'll see, I'll tell you. The rationale for this, why should we involve, why should we bring this in? It makes it more equitable for our students that, who don't, aren't interested in band or choir or mariachi, but they still are interested in music. There's a lot of solo musicians, a lot of people that practice piano or violin. Uh, there's a lot of solo musicians, a lot of people that, uh, practice piano or violin, uh, which are not offered as courses here for them to be able to delve deeper into those topics. Students that want to compose, that want to create music, um, have the opportunity for being in this class. Uh, the, uh, students who are, uh, wanting to work on understanding how music works in the world, how music is like music, if there's part of it that is music theory, where we talk about how music works, why it works that way, and why we follow those rules, how music is used throughout the world, how different parts of the world interpret music, and how those compare and contrast. Uh, one-year program, oops, that's a timer. Sorry, I'm trying to, sorry, I'm trying to control how much I talk here. Uh, but anyways, uh, the one-year program, uh, definitely puts an appropriate foundation for further study in music at the university level. This is basically your first year of freshman classes as a music major, uh, all in one course. You're learning composition, you're learning theory, you're learning sight reading, you're learning, like I said, music of the world, you're learning music history. Uh, it's a lot, um, for students and for students that are really interested, it will be amazing for them to have this opportunity. Um, it also provides an enriching valuable course of study for students who may pursue other careers. There are many, many studies that show correlation between taking music education courses and SAT scores going up, attendance rates going up. Uh, you know, if you look at the statistics of people that, that, uh, work in careers where they earn certain figures, uh, a vast majority of those people have taken music education throughout their school. Uh, so it's another opportunity for those students to, uh, to build those skills, um, and, you know, teamwork and, and, uh, uh, collaboration skills that we use in music so often. Um, all students with, uh, with this, uh, have the opportunity to engage in the world of music as lifelong participants. Uh, in here, like I said, we'll study musical perception, how is music, uh, how is music seen, how does music work? Um, why do we follow these rules? Uh, we submit, we will also be submitting a musical links investigation, uh, where students take two different types of music from different time periods, from different parts of the world, different genres, and they have to compare and contrast and say what is similar between these things, what are different. Um, uh, we also respond to a listening examination paper where students are listening to music and analyzing it and, uh, identifying characteristics of the piece. Uh, they also have an independent project where they can choose between creating, composing, uh, music. They can do a solo performance or a nice thing about this is they can also do group performance, which could be met by having criminal enrollment in choir, band, or mariachi. Um, so that's wonderful. Uh, here's the learning outcomes there, uh, that the assessments, uh, have as, uh, that we're trying to follow through the assessments. And there are the, uh, different tasks that will, uh, cover those objectives. Uh, just, uh, just for fun, I took one of the components, which is the composition component. And I didn't even pull all the standards from the National Education Standards for Music, but I just pulled a bunch of them. And if this was bigger font, you would be able to read how complex and crazy these, these standards are. You got it in front of you. Good job. But, uh, but, uh, the, if it, this course would be the most, uh, rigorous, but also beneficial, uh, component of music education that I've seen. Uh, you know, I went to Hillsborough School, I went to Hill High as a student. And this is the, this would be the most intense but rewarding musical experience for any student that would really want to take it.
So Ben leaves the, the fun part. Unlike Bob's course, there is a, a cost associated with running an IB course. It's largely an upfront cost, being that we haven't had an advanced music course at Hill High. There's some things that we need to buy for like a better word. I'm out of words about like two o'clock. This is really pushing it. The first is that we need to send a teacher to training to be able to, um, appropriately deliver the course to the students of the IB. Um, and so that cost is up there. And that has to happen every five to seven years or with turnover. But since Ben was born in the Hillsborough School District and at Hill High pretty much, uh, he's never leaving. And, um, boo hoo, there's, Jerry told me, you wrote in blood. Um, there's a materials cost as well, and mostly that we high balls it because we kind of, it's a little bit of an unknown. We started to do some preliminary research about what it would look like to actually provide our students with, um, the technology that they would need to compose and create studio quality music and what that would look like in a school setting. And so we're kind of playing with ideas that we have. Um, we're looking at some site visits to schools in the area that offer music SL to kind of see what they have so that we can get an idea of what that might look like. Um, but we really just use the Google and try to see what schools were using. And that's our like total high-end thing here on, on what's up. And that's our last slide, so we'll just leave that up there for us.
Thank you. So just a couple of quick notes from the conversation at the CCAC. Uh, again, questions are around access and barriers. So what about students who want to pursue the IB test? Is there a cost for that? And they explained that there'd be ninety dollars for the testing fee, but that we cover the cost for students free and we do lunch. We want to scholarship students so that they can access that test. We talked about English language learners. Um, in some cases, students would need text translation, but a lot of the, um, accommodation for students with language barriers would be personal attention from the teacher. Uh, Mr. Royce just talked about how, you know, languages, uh, music can be a universal language and that students can be really successful beyond differences in, um, language barriers in that class. And then, uh, could students from other schools take this? And our answer was maybe. So, um, happy to answer any questions at this time.
Eric, now I have.
Oh, the vote was thirteen zero zero.
I have, um, let's read Sheen, Mark. Is that correct?
Oh, you have me. Oh, I do have a question, actually. Um, what is, what does DP and SL stand for?
Thank you for asking. It's a great clear question. Um, so DP is Diploma Program. There's, um, three different levels in the IB. PYP, which is for primary school, MYP, which is middle year, and then DP, which is intended for standard sixteen and older. And then SL and HL are two different levels of classes. Um, SL is standard level. It usually requires a little bit less seat hours or there is fewer texts to read, for example, in English. Slightly fewer components. HL is higher level. And so those credit differently when they transfer to colleges. They're awarded more credit for HL than they would be for.
I see. So that's just leaving Ben the IB program.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
I would like to take this class too. The, I, I think you're absolutely right about the way that music education translates to other aspects of our brain development and what the, uh, anecdotally, two of the most talented software technology people I know were both music majors, so. And as a parent of two students who had AP Music at one of our other high schools, I'm very excited to see something like this operating.
So I was gonna ask the SL thing, but I thought that's, that is good. And then I guess my comment would just be, um, I think the thing that I'm most excited about as a, um, person who is just a cheerleader for the IB program, has the idea that this can also like diploma options for more kids. So as you said on one of the original slides, and I always, um, am hopeful to see this one grow. And I am excited that it's something that, so thank you for giving this.
Ask students, right?
Okay, uh, okay, it is working out there. Mr. Penau, I still using this. So, um, I know we have AP Music at Letco and I know that it's been developing. I'm not sure about the exact student count, um, for the class, since it's first year at Letco. But, um, it has gained a lot of interest and I'm always for supporting the arts through visual and performing. Um, so, um, I'm definitely for supporting for this course and its approval.
I just want to say thank you very much for going the extra mile and investing in the IB program. Both my boys went through IB and, uh, a great experience. And more to the performing arts at Hill High, standing on shoulders of giants with, uh, Sil Scott back in the day with both my boys. And, uh, and, uh, and Mr. Poplin, of course. Yep. And so thank you for going the extra mile and jumping through all the extra IB and HSD to get to this point. And also to Bob and Becky, I want to thank all four of you for taking on the challenge of creating new curriculum and pushing that needle all the way to this point in the process. Uh, from the perspective of a board member, as I wrap my brain around hundreds of pages for each board meeting, these kind of new curriculums are so energizing. They're just fun reading for us late at night and it's just inspiring. So you've inspired me as a board member and I want to say thank you. Thank you.
So do you, I just had a question because you mentioned that who this course is for and the majority like students that aren't maybe in choir or mariachi or band, but they're doing some sort of musical thing on their own? Or are there also just students that are interested in music that don't play?
Yeah, those, uh, I wouldn't, there are a, 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 a large portion of the musicians at Hill High that are not involved in our courses because they are more about, uh, genres that we don't teach, that we don't always focus on, pop, rock, rap, hip-hop, uh, electronic music. Uh, while this will talk about music history and we will kind of go into that dead old white guy music a lot, um, we'll also be talking about all different genres. We'll be talking about music from around the world. And, uh, this will give them an opportunity to be able to create music that expresses themselves and use that knowledge to further their musical experience.
And, and I'll add that part of the reason why we see this class as a gateway for students who don't need some of the other arts prereqs that kind of keep them from the diploma is that Ben able to work with some of those, I'm gonna say non-traditional arts pathway kids who haven't taken the group performance classes because that's not their shit. Um, and then get them in. So there's no prereq really for this class, other than enthusiasm for or some sort of tangible practice of music. So that's kind of our way to move on.
Yeah, I would say, you know, as someone, as a teacher who teaches mariachi, um, back to the question about language I was thinking about while he's talking about it. Uh, the only times that I ever see any issues in my classes when students don't know the amount of, deal rigor. There's never been, I've never had an issue with learning abilities or language. We've always been able to find a way, like I said, because music is a universal language. While I may struggle sometimes speaking the language that the student, or that, that we're, we're having issues communicating with. Uh, I, I've always found a way, a successful way to be able to get them involved and get them on the same levels as their peers. Uh, and so, like I said, the only, the only thing that might keep students, that might hinder students is to not know the rigor. But with that title of IB before this, that gives a very clear expectation of, you know, what to expect out of this course.
And I guess my question was more because I think one of the components you mentioned is that they have to do a composition or a performance or something in a group. So if they were to come in here, like it would be a rap or a hip-hop kind of.
Yeah, and, and a composition is a, uh, can be, you know, like, that's part of the reason why we're talking about technology, uh, because not everyone wants to get sheet music and sit down and write out all the notes. But a lot of people can get on GarageBand and get a MIDI keyboard and figure out a way to get their, their music, how they express themselves out there.
Thank you so much.
Mark, I think you put it really great. Thank you for the extra time that you offered into creating these courses. Um, teachers are taken on themselves to be creative and to put these proposals together and are supported by their teams. So thank you so much, everybody, for those presentations.
Do you want to stay out there and just do our division to the chances?
I would, thank you. To make sure I have my notes. So, um, we've been in this situation for a couple of years now where we are compliant in every area. Division twenty-two with the exception of the instructional materials adoption. So I would direct your attention to the fourth page of the, the new template that ODEE provided for us to post our compliance to our community. This will be a, uh, document that's available online. I just wanted board members to be able to speak to, uh, this one area where we are out of compliance with this seven-year cycle as prescribed by ODEE for adopting new curriculum across every curricular area.
And, um, just for clarification, the fourth page of their separate.
The, there's a, oh, you know what, in your packet, it might be a loose file.
It's called two H four, Division twenty-two, the HSD.
Right.
Sorry, guys.
I'll tell you all that, all right? In the new template, there's an explanation of the reason. And then I included our, um, dialogue with ODEE Assistant Superintendent Jennifer Patterson, um, asking for permission to post to phone adoption. We've been in communication with them about our language arts process. And then, so I documented the proposed corrective action, which is despite our lack of funding, uh, funding for comprehensive materials adoption on a seven-year cycle, we continue to teach to state national standards in every grade level across the content areas. We continue to support the curation and online accessibility of resources for teachers. And we've nearly completed our independent adoption of language arts materials for both English language arts and Spanish language arts. We'll continue with that process. Uh, you'll hear next month about our language arts adoption for case six. And we'll continue to align standards and move forward with secondary language arts as a conversation. And then, um, we'll continue to comply with our request to postpone the purchase of state-adopted instructional materials in an annual cycle so that I can document for board and community that we're in compliance in all areas except this area. Probably don't have to mention it, but the student investment account dollars we hope will help accelerate the rate of us coming on cycle at least with language arts adoption. Happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Okay, our next item on the agenda is our policy for reading.
So as is our practice, we try and keep these two in advance. You can either hit us up with any questions in advance, or I know that always does work out. So if we have any questions, we can answer them at this time. Our intent is to put these on thirty-year reviews. So any questions or concerns, nobody can address or research for it.
Jackie?
I have a couple. Do you, did you just go, just do it all at once?
Yeah. And then if you could also note which cabinet member is, is it on that list?
It's on the board, it's on the board, in the board update.
Yep, okay.
Okay, so it's page one forty-nine in the packet. It's IMCA Site Councils. I'm just curious if, um, in the membership area, we want to include something about members, when possible, ensuring that members are representative of the student demographics at that school. I mean, I know that's not always possible, but it might be something that, um, since we're adding it in other policies, we might want to look at doing. Do we keep going?
Yep, I can just make the note.
That's okay. The next one's on page two thirty. Oh, my goodness. And it's the inter-scholastic activities. And I, I have asked Casey, I sent him an email. Um, in paragraph two, it says that we allow homeschool students that reside in the district to participate. We also allow private school attendees, and so I don't, I don't know if we need to add that. But, um, it should, it was just a thought that I had.
I'd check it. Can you repeat that policy name?
IGDJ.
Thank you.
And then in paragraph five of the same policy, um, regarding volunteers, um, it's not clear that they also need to have district approval. It just says, I'm not on the page yet.
Prior approval from the principal.
Prior approval from the principal, but it's also, I clarified with Casey that they have to be a district approved volunteer as well. And I think that's important to include in that, because that's a, a different process. Can we keep going? Page two seventy-eight is JFI. Student demonstrations and petitions. And, so the original wording was recommended by OSBA. So I have concerns about number one, changing the wording, because I do, um, tend to rely on OSBA for accurate wording. And I'm wondering if some of these details, like what the plan, what the, um, demonstration plan includes, like the safety plan or the craft control plan, would be better served in an AR instead of in the policy? Um, because I think different demonstrations will probably require maybe different plans. And so if, if you're demonstrating at lunch, you're gonna do a sit-in, you might not need to have a student safety plan. So I don't know if, if changing the policy this much is, is what we're looking for. Or if we want to put it in an AR, that was the demonstration section. And for the petition section, and I did talk to Beth about this, because I was confused about, um, the second paragraph, to me, seems to contradict the first paragraph, but when she explained it, I understood. Where students are prohibited from engaging in circulating petitions which violate district policy, but that's why they're distributing the petitions is to change it? So I, I don't know if, and maybe that was just me that was confused. But maybe we can reword the second one. I don't know. It just, it confused me. It was like it contradicted the reason for the petition in the first place. So, yeah, that's all I have. Oh, and I didn't see an AR for, um, for this policy. Oh, and I didn't see an A R for, for this policy in the packet, which there might not be one, but again, if we want to, if, and I think we need to discuss it about changing the details of what that demonstration plan is, maybe in an A R instead of the policy. That's it.
Thank you. Do we, for the comments on those first meeting items?
So just to respond, we will take a look at your suggestions there. Can't do it off the top of my head right now, but we'll, we'll take a look and then do that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, our next item is information. And we have administrative regulations updates.
Again, these are, these are listed in the packet and these are information only. If you have any questions, we're happy to answer them.
How far away are we?
We're so close. I want to say.
We're like two away.
Oh, this is huge. Yeah, we are one group away.
Wow, really?
Can we handle harder ones for that?
Is there a reason why so many were able to be done this pretty good stuff?
We've had, we, because of some past board meetings that were, we just had to put some of them off. And so we had time to do some groups together. And, and we do need to, once, once we're up to date, which has been never in my career. So this will be a, this will be a first. We do need to celebrate that, because I know this is a huge priority of board.
Oh, it's so exciting.
I have one question from the prior board chair. I think it's instructional goals, code I eight.
I eight.
And the book is 141.
And it's, is it policy or anything?
I eight.
Yeah, instructional goals. And so on that first, it says we provide equal and open access and educational opportunities for all students, and then lists different things. Could we consider adding like immigration status to that? Especially how things are changing. So, what do you want to do right now? And I know this is from OSBA, but.
Right. Let us take a look. Yeah, happy to get back.
Okay, our next item. So my board appreciation gift was that we have a board meeting to say yes.
Thank you.
So our next item is HCU and H E A.
Yay. Yes, hello. I'm Joe Vermeer, Vice President of H E A, Hillsborough Education Association. And I'm up here with esteemed Presidents Jill Golein and Melie Hampton from HCU. And we just wanted to say a big, big thank you and how much we appreciate you board members, every one of you. So we got you copies of little Brigitte, Brigitte.
Brigitte.
Her and Tim's book, My Oregon. She spoke, of course, last year. She's so amazing. And yeah, we just want to share them with you, because we like you so much. Thank you. That's really our reporter.
Wow, we have like an hour ahead.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Copy.
Yeah, it's like personalized.
Yeah, so this is awesome. Thank you so much. Okay, we are at discussion time. So let's start with our student reps.
All right, thank you. So lots of stuff has been going on at Glanco, aside from the recent lockdown. But maybe I'd like to emphasize the things that we're doing regarding arts and STEM. We have the upcoming musical. It's Willy Wonka. It takes place February 21st, 22nd, the 27th, 28th, and 29th, because we have a week here this year. I believe they all start at 7:30 with a two o'clock show in Saturday, Saturday the 22nd. Y'all should go watch it. They did the Willy Wonka, and it was seriously like mind-blowing how they executed it. And I have no doubt that this year will be going really well too. March 17th, which is a warm evening, but the HSD High School Choirs will have the concert in the Glanco auditorium, which also means I will not be present for that evening. But Glanco Choir also performs March 18th. So I see Danielle's in concert, and we really appreciate the student rep support. And then reverend STEM, eventually I think it's March 4th, but I don't look at the date confirmed. Is our Shockwave Robotics debut. And, you know, we may think, oh yeah, it's just robotics. Shockwave has gone international with robotics. So it's kind of a big deal. We'll have, I think, hopefully, a watch for that. Their Calaway show up, and hopefully it'll be there in this year. That's really, it's been going on a lot of what we have right now.
Again.
Okay, so I wish I was as knowledgeable on my school as Andrew, but I'm a senior with a couple full ID classes. And that's kind of hard. But our school is perfectly fun. This whole week, this whole week too, it's, it's been raining, so going to Spartan Estates is pretty wet. But it's safe. We're making it alive. Thank you.
You see your principals here, right?
No.
There goes that water bottle.
As you can see, Maria has her own plastic water bottle. She's very upset about this.
I am.
Since our last board meeting, I started a full schedule with the Hillsborough Early College at PCC Rock Creek Campus. Exciting. Got 12 credits. The program so far has been really good. I've been talking to a lot of the other students in the early college. They're really excited. A lot of them have been doing it for a whole term before, because I kind of came in late. So that's what's going on at Early College. Back at big picture, they just had their exhibitions, which is their big, like, show of their knowledge. And for a lot of them, they're doing it really well, so they're really excited about that. And yes, I do go to a lot of the Glanco High School choir concerts. And I can say that they are amazing. You should definitely check them out if you have a moment, because just, they're, they sound great, and then they do a great performance. It's really good.
All right, Superintendent.
All right, just a couple things here. First of all, we are in the process of starting our student listening opportunities. So that's where we go with the high schools, and we start to have conversations with this, kind of, students and seniors. So I'll be sending out those dates to see if you're interested. We probably shouldn't all show up, because it'd be overwhelming for the students. And I think the sharing would be, it squelched a bit. But if we go maybe groups of two or three, I think that would be, that would be great, if you're interested. And if it's in your schedule. Second thing is have the opportunity to tour the new gym at Eastwood that we're going to be doing the ribbon cutting ceremony for. It is incredible. The kids have not seen it yet. So the first time that they actually go in the gym, we'll learn the ribbon cutting ceremonies or decide to see their reaction to that. I think you're going to be really happy with what they look like and the fact that we're going to be replicating those throughout the district. And it's going to be great things for our, great thing for our community. I wanted to mention that SSA dollars in the process. I know we, we did a big rundown up there, but we do continue the engagement process. So we'll continue to have conversations with H E A. And we'll start our conversations with HCU on Friday. As well, to continue to get feedback, we'll provide that data to you at the next meeting. The other thing that I'll be reaching out here, prior to the March meeting where we need to start making some decisions and really narrowing things down. I'm going to be reaching out and wanting to meet with you in groups of maybe two or three at a time, just that I can answer any really specific question that you have. It seems like we always run out of time in those work sessions. And so just want to make ourselves available to do that. Travis and I will be, be reaching out to you to do that. Maria tomorrow is going to be starring in the legislative, listening, or legislating opportunity with Washington County. She's going to be speaking on behalf of the district. And she's going to be awesome. Can't wait to hear it. She's got some important information to share. And in fact, just thanks again to the board for, shouldn't be only one to do it, you get appreciated. Like you said, thank you for all of your efforts on behalf of us. Greatly appreciate it.
Thank you. So we'll start with our board of directors, kind of, Jackie at the end.
I really appreciate the recognition. I love the books and the cards from the kids and the signs that are all around. Definitely don't do it for that. I don't think any of us do. But it's, it's nice to, to see what the kids have to say. So February 5th is Smart, it's reading, it's Read a Loud Day Around the World. Probably still put that wrong. So I'm going to be reading at Roseville Elementary with Smart for that, so I'm really excited about that. Love the black jacket and the Hill High speaker. This is great. But again, I love all the signs. And Shockwave Robotics is nothing to sneeze at, because I work, it's an opportunity to have them come and do a presentation for Bring Your Child to Work Day. Wow, I was very, very impressed with, with what the robot did and how the kids reacted with everything. So it's absolutely amazing.
Be next. Uh, yeah, thank, thank you guys for all the, it's kind of, we're three years in, three years in. I still kind of forget that it's, and you get here and it's like, oh my gosh, look at all this stuff. So thank you all for all the nice stuff that you do for us. I had the honor of, I have the honor of serving on Legislative Policy Committee now for OSBA. Eric and I spent the weekend down in Salem doing that and working on what the, really, not a lot happens in the short session, as probably most of you know. It's mostly for refining, tweaking bills, not a lot of new ideas getting introduced. So it's a lot of work figuring out what the legislative priorities for OSBA will be for the upcoming next full session in 2021. So if you guys have, interested in what those are, that's pretty, pretty similar to what we've already been doing. I can, I can let you know that I, I'll let Brooke Mill over know that one of the things that seems to be making the cut is the idea of alignment between dual credit courses and those classes being accepted at the universities in the state. So that's, that's something that I think OSBA and Al would like to see us push for as well. So I mean, either, the consensus around my table was either that should happen or we should stop telling people that it's gonna. Stop having dual credit, which is not going to work, and stop telling kids it's gonna. And, and on that front, the, the most heartwarming thing of the entire audience is getting to be in a room with 50 school board members from around the state and every part of the state. And no matter how you might color different areas with your colored pencils, everybody just has the best interest of the kids at heart. And working from that common ground is pretty amazing, will be kind of agree on.
So I was going to make this whole spiel about how awesome I thought Brooke Mill was, because she's the only person, like, in the history of our meetings who's brought timer to make sure she don't go over time. But then, Mr. Noise from, is that how you say his name? What a perfect name for a music teacher. Anyway, he did it too. So these people should get extra timings to him as a positive reward.
That's just like, no, no.
That's not like an idea that I'm so excited, so I love it as much. So that was cool. Anyway, I agree about board appreciation, which is my favorite time of year. And the last January meeting is exciting to me, and I love all the cool stuff that we have. I love the school swag, what we get, and so that's so exciting, and I, I do appreciate it. It's definitely the highlight. I agree. Let's see, I just, I guess I want to say sorry for my lack of presence over the, the coming months. I'm not going to be at the Smart thing, the Riverway. There's a lot of things that I'm, I'm going to be missing just for all time. So I appreciate you guys trying to pick up this slack. I know that I kind of told you that I'm going to be a little bit more out of commission, but, but you guys are awesome. And I know that probably it won't really matter what you guys have got. So I'm just even more grateful than normal, since it's for appreciation. I appreciate all of you and giving to sort of people all the aid. It's definitely the highlight of my years on board so far. This is the very best one. Also, you guys are great too, but you count. So that's all. Thank you.
And yeah, I just wanted to say thank you. I, yeah, this is, I feel so loved and cared for, appreciated. So thank you. Thank you so much.
I'm going to continue with the things. I don't have very much to share, but this is wonderful. I love. I was reading the card, and it was written in Spanish, so that is so awesome. I love to see our dual-language students and just how, how amazing they are. But thank you, everybody.
I'd also like to thank my colleagues. I love you all, my sisters and brothers. And we were, we were blessed tonight with two former board members, Kim and Lisa. And you can see that they continue to serve the community in amazing ways. So I hope that's, that's an example. We all said, you know, we, we have ways to serve. And right now it's this way, and as we go through our life, there's other ways to serve too. I wanted to say, give a shout out to Travis and the, and the, and the staff for a great Student Success Act engagement at, at Brookwood Library. And lots of staff were there, union leadership was there. It was a really good session. I sat at a table with Brooke, happened to be Brooke, and she moderated, did an amazing job. And it was really interesting to me to see how passionate some members of the committee are about this or that. And that was the basis for my comment, that whatever we settle upon, we need to be able to speak to why we've done that, because somebody will be disappointed. And, you know, at least if we can speak to it and explain it, then I think that will go a long way to acceptance. So looking forward to that and, and continuing that discussion with the community about Student Success Act. Also want to give a shout out to Connor and Mike for investing in me. And an important member of the community, Hector Hanaosa. We went out to lunch and we talked about teacher pathways with an eye for diversifying our staff. We, we, we visited the Teach for Beaverton, T for B, and their model. And, and, and also discussed about all the great things that we're already doing here in Hillsborough School District to accomplish that important objective. So I really enjoyed that. And let's see, I think that's all I got.
Thank you, Martin. For me, I just, again, thanking all of you for helping me get Mark appointed to OSBA Legislative Committee. It's really nice to have another Hillsborough board member over there. And also just, it was a really heavy weekend. I was there from Friday all the way till Sunday, like after lunch. So it was a lot of work, and there was a lot of different board members from all over the place. And it's, like Mark said, it's really nice to see us coming together and, and a collaborative environment, coming up with those priorities that affect all students of Oregon. So I thank you for nominating me and serving on that board. The other thing is I also sent you an updated one, what's on, so feel free to read it after leisure. And tomorrow we have our Washington County Legislative Summit as well, where we're going to be advocating to our legislators for different things on behalf of Hillsborough School District. And I was going to say, also, my son did Lego Revives, and he still remembers the team, the high school students come and demonstrate their stuff, and he loved watching that. And we're also going to do the highlight flipping the switch next week. So that's like a super important and awesome partnership with Hillsborough and everybody.
Is that still on the fifth?
It's still on the fifth, so look for it on your calendars. And if you're able to attend, I think that's going to be pretty awesome for our community to make sure that everybody has access to high-speed internet at prices that are affordable, especially for our low-income community members. So I'm really excited to be part of that. And I think with that, maybe I should do a session. So, and that's all.